Select Board of Representatives, please. All those who are able, please stand for the pledge.
My pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brittany, would you do the roll call, please?
You have Mike Strout.
Here.
Mr. Bishop.
Here.
And Hollard.
Here.
And Todd Swinney.
Here. And Mr. Bertelsis. Okay, on the minutes, we still don't have our minutes in our folders, so...
I'll make a motion. We're minutes from last week until next week.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded any further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Public to address the board. This is a time when the public may address the board, and any item listed on the meeting agenda, or any issue or matter of the town, if you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask you to do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company/institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair or the designated. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make that request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Is there anyone out there who would like to speak on any of the items? Agenda items. Jill?
Well, I might want to speak on number eight.
Okay.
So we'll just leave that. I want to leave that door open if that is possible.
I'm going to say that it's number nine.
Yeah, this, well, we can't say that till we should tell it. Number nine, a number nine issue, we're probably going to table that. I'm just going to give you a heads up on that right now. Okay, any other? Richard?
Yeah, hi. Rich Toll, 164 Green Ridge. I would like to be recognized on number eight. But one of my concerns is, this was put on the agenda as a letter of request to Paul Mark. But that's very vague on what this is about, as far as an agenda item. So maybe next time, it could be a little bit more clarified. Yeah, because the public might not know what it's about. Thank you.
Hi, Bob. Again, number eight, I'd like to speak to.
Anyone else?
Number eight.
Anyone else?
The agenda item that I saw, when I looked at it online, included a discussion of elimination of health benefits.
Yes.
And that's what I was going to speak to.
Okay, when we get to that, we're probably going to table that, Margaret.
It's not on the one I have in my hand.
Oh, it's not on the one in your hand, or something?
Well, I just have a couple things to say. Can I just say it on the record for whatever? I was saying that it was good that the select board was going to review and discuss this costly, unfair, and fiscally irresponsible town-paid health insurance for select board members. I think it's only right that this costly benefit be permanently discontinued. Select board members typically work fewer than 20 hours a week. Other employees in town who are not elected and work fewer than 20 hours a week are not eligible for this Cadillac insurance. In the near future, Dalton's going to be required to spend millions of dollars on schools, stormwater infrastructure, and the sewer system. These millions are in addition to our current obligations, and it's just irresponsible to continue this financially burdensome expense. Our elected officials should be good role models. There are many elected officials in town who serve without any salary stipend or health benefits. There are many Dalton residents who serve on town committees, on boards, and commissions without any compensation. It's really unfortunate that Dalton taxpayers have for decades paid for health benefits for individuals working fewer than 20 hours a week, and once off the select board, not working at all, yet in some cases, still receiving these costly benefits. Elimination of the insurance benefit would still permit select board members to continue to collect a salary. Please take action to permanently eliminate the health care option for select board members. Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts. Appreciate it. Does anyone else want to be recognized on any item under the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I wanted to comment on the football.
Bob, I believe Dickie Crane intends to show up. Is this the time when I should mention his name? I think he will want to respond.
I'd like to comment on football.
The number eight.
Number eight.
Did your team that win last night?
No, they didn't. Okay. Okay, so we'll move to item six, update on net metering project.
Is there a public comment period?
That's the public comment period. We just had it.
Oh, I didn't make my public comment.
You're going to be recognized on eight.
But will I get to say everything I want to say?
I don't know.
That just means, I thought that's, is that instead of?
What do you want?
Well, and when it comes time to number eight, will I be able to make a statement?
Yes.
Oh, fine. I thought I would only be able to, like, maybe raise my hand and get called. Okay, fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to call Beth Greenblatt, she's going to update us on the net metering project.
Hi, Beth, can I also here? Fine, thank you. I'm going to put you on speakerphone so that you can give us a little update, okay? All right, thank you. Okay, Beth, can you hear us?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, Bob.
Good evening.
Happy Monday, day after a uneventful, unfun Super Bowl, right?
Yeah, I'm still crying.
So, Ken, what would you, do you want to start? What would you like me to do?
Yeah, why don't you talk about the status of the project and what we've learned from the Cow Power folks, and then we can go and explain the spreadsheet that you've done for the board.
Terrific. So, after the last meeting, I had a long conversation with the folks from Cow Power, who had indicated, I think, as Ken was certainly aware, their original proposal to the town was offered a lower discount off of net metering. And while it was still a highly competitive and highly attractive offer, it wasn't as attractive as the solar project offer. They certainly were, you know, anxious to support the town in the project, and on their own, came back to us with an opportunity to sort of sweeten their offer and raise their, the discount from their original 15% to 17.5%. That was under their, the understanding, from their perspective, although I can't say that was specifically articulated to me, but it was under the understanding that they would be sort of the sole beneficiary of the towns interested in net metering. That 100% of the town's capacity for net metering would be involved in the Cow Power project. And so when we went back to them and offered to buy, instead of, you know, the total of 500,000 kilowatt-hours, we offered to buy 220, they came back to us and said that their, you know, the owner of the project had a concern that they were, they had multiple different offers for the same amount of capacity, and they felt that was not something that they were particularly interested in. So they went back to their original offer. And they indicated that they would still be happy and anxious for the town to be the beneficiary of the energy from, or the net metering credits associated with the energy generated at the Cow Power digester in the amount of 220,000 kilowatt-hours, but it would revert back to the same 15% discount originally offered. So Ken asked me if I would sort of take a look at what the board had voted the last time, which was to participate in both the BBD solar project as well as the Cow Power digester project. And the total cumulative benefits, which is communicated, Ken, I don't know if you printed it in color, but it's sort of the blue highlighted, that first set of columns on the spreadsheet under the heading "Original Offer, December 2017", and just compared it to this revised, or back to their original offer, so back to the 15% discount for the Cow Power at 220,000 kilowatt-hours. And as you can see, the overall impact in the first year is about, wait, I've got to put my glasses on. The overall impact in the first year is about 6,000, I'm sorry, over the 20-year term, is about $6,000 difference.
That's all the way to the bottom, to the bottom row.
All the way in the bottom in red. Yeah, in the first year, the economic benefits now are about, and again, all of this is illustrative, and it's what we believe to be representative of what your economic benefits are going to be, but everything is tied to that one magic net metering number, which currently is at 10.638. If that goes up, the economic benefits are higher. If that goes down, the economic benefits are lower. But with that as the understanding, you know, the first year benefits from the combination of projects is $8,723, as compared to what we were looking at before of $93.08. So it's a pretty, again, you know, every penny always counts, but it's a pretty small difference because of the volume that you're looking to buy. $585 in the first year, and that grows over 20 years to $6,121.
So we didn't want to proceed?
Mainly most of that difference is, all of that difference is in the first 10 years. Because as you know, the Cow Power project is a 10-year contract, whereas the BBD project is a 20-year contract with a five-year renewal. Both of them have early termination provisions.
So we didn't want to proceed because your original understanding of the deal was we'd get a 17.5% discount, that's why I asked Beth to introduce you tonight. Beth, is there an advantage over staying with two versus one?
I think one of the things that, you know, Ken and I certainly talked about was by participating in both, and this is, you know, really your own preference, it's two different kinds of hedges, right? One of them is a hedge based on term, where you're able to really take advantage of a longer-term opportunity with the solar project, because the deal is a 20-year deal with a five-year, you know, optional renewal. The other hedge really is sort of counting on the renewable generation associated with a, with sort of, you know, a biodigester, which has higher availability, because it's not relying on the sun, versus a solar energy project, which does have a lower availability, because it's relying on the sun. The other piece is, the digester provides you a more level set of benefits, because it's operating pretty evenly throughout the year, where solar, as you know, you get significant benefits in the summer months and much fewer benefits in the winter months. So by participating in both projects, you're sort of treating one as a hedge against the other and taking advantage of the opportunities of both. Plus, it allows the town the opportunity to boast that it's really involved and, quote, "invested" with big air quotes around it, because you're not making a capital investment, you're making a sort of a contractual relationship investment in two very different kinds of renewable projects. One supporting sort of, you know, renewable generation from agriculture, the other renewable generation from the sun. So it's a nice story. It's a nice opportunity, you know, both of them, separately and collectively together, you get that benefit of the hedge.
Any other questions?
Well, one quick, just a quick observation, Mr. Chairman. The Trump administration recently raised a tariff on the importation of solar panels. And evidently, this is having a reverberation throughout the solar panel industry. And it's been indicated that it might have some effect on the net metering credit as has been established by the Mass Legislature. Do you have any importer comments on that?
Yeah, let me address that in two different ways. So indeed, the Trump administration did impose a 30% import tariff that is, that will decline over the next four or five years to 15%. It is expected that it will have, particularly on sizable projects, will have an impact on the financial, perhaps not the financial viability, but certainly the profitability of these projects, and will necessitate solar developers to really sharpen their pencils and do a bare due diligence to ensure that they're building these projects as cost-effective as they can. The BBD solar project is, as I understand it, has the equipment already in hand, and had the equipment in hand before the tariffs were imposed. So they were obviously, since they had already acquired them, they were not subject to the import tariff. So their equipment is, I don't want to say grandfathered, but it is in fact grandfathered from that tariff, and it will not affect the financial viability of their project. So that's the first thing. I think the second point that you had made about net metering. So net metering is, different from the solar incentive or the SMART program, which is a program established as a policy initiative in response to a directive under state law. Net metering is in and of itself a statute, and can only be changed by the legislature. Whereas the SMART program as a whole, of which net metering serves as a financial component, is included, the SMART program is subject to changes of regulation and under the Department of Energy Resources, implemented by the Department of Public Utilities, all under the sort of watchful eye of the governor. Net metering, as we know it right now, is still in effect. It's called market net metering. It's available, different levels of net metering is available based on each utility's peak capacity. Behind Eversource, Womiko, there is still some capacity for net metering, about 10 megawatts of capacity in the public cap. Once that capacity is gone, the future for net metering is sort of up in the air. And there is all kinds of activity happening again, and this will not be the first time the legislature has been asked to increase the caps. But there's all kinds of activities in the industry lobbying the legislature to once again increase the caps for net metering. The utilities, as part of their tariff for the SMART program, have actually also proposed an alternative solution to net metering, but it comes at a lower economic value than net metering. So I think we're all watching for the future of net metering. I think the one piece that should keep you feeling more comfortable about the BBD project is once they secure their net metering cap, and they're very close to being in the position to do that, once they secure it, it's locked in for 25 years, fully grandfathered. And that's codified in state law. So I think, I completely understand your comments, and I think they're very, very good, you know, clearly you're following the market. There is, you know, there is some risk in future projects that will depend on the full value of net metering. But I anticipate there'll be some relief by the legislature, but if not, there'll be an alternative mechanism to be able to allow the Commonwealth to achieve the next 1,600 megawatts of solar capacity that it's looking to bring in. But the BBD solar project is, once they secure their net metering cap, will be grandfathered for 25 years with net metering, so there's no risk in that regard. And the same is true with the Cow Power project. They actually have already secured their net metering cap. So once that project goes online, it has 25 years of grandfathered net metering capacity.
I just want to say one thing. I'm a little frustrated, because we had the representative here from Hampshire Power, and we asked her specifically if it would be an issue of splitting between BBD, and she sat there and she told us it wouldn't be an issue. And now we're back here talking about net metering credits, which I joke about all the time, that we don't want to do a meeting. But we're back here again talking about, as we had an agreement with her that it would be, they would be finally splitting it like that. Now we're back here after they've changed their terms. So, and I know we're talking about $6,000 over 20-year terms.
$12,000, actually.
$12,000. So, I'm just a little frustrated with that.
I think she felt, Beth, can probably comment on this, I think she felt she wasn't allowed to speak to that issue.
Yeah, that's what Shanae had mentioned to me, that she would have liked to have gotten up and addressed that directly at the meeting, but felt that she, that it was not the type of meeting where she had the opportunity to make, sort of make that case.
I think she was asked directly at the end whether the split would be okay, and she nodded her head, but she wasn't able to participate in the discussion. And then she went back and confirmed it with her investors that they wouldn't be agreeable to the 17.5% discount unless they got the whole half a million kilowatts. Anything else? Anything else for Beth?
Well, Beth, what are you suggesting or recommending? That we, the proposal that we accepted stand, or our offer stand, or our level of involvement, or are you suggesting a change?
I think, given that the SMART program incentives, as we've discussed previously, are significantly lower than the SREC II incentives, these types of net metering offers are only going to diminish over time. So taking advantage of the amount of capacity that you're comfortable with now, I think is prudent. And so I think these offers that you've received, again, BBD is sort of, not to help on a football analogy, but they're sort of at the 10-yard line, whereas, you know, Cow Power is ready to go. So I think you've got the benefit of, you know, timing on both of them. BBD has already indicated to me that they will, they're expecting thumbs up from the planning board. Planning board had to, they had a planning board permit, a special permit they had to secure, that they were unaware they needed to do. So they're in the process of doing that. Once that's done, they've already done the other local permitting that's been necessary. They have all of the utility pieces done. So once the, once the planning board issues their orders, they'll be able to apply for and secure that metering cap. So I think both projects are in a good position. They're both under construction. BBD has already cleared their land. They just can't start constructing until they get a planning board order. But they have all the equipment, they're ready to go, and as soon as they have approval from planning board, which they expect, and even if there are certain conditions, they have every expectation beneath them. They will start construction and get it done, preferably by March 31st, but if not, certainly by June.
Can BBD take the extra 230 solar credits that we currently, if we decide to go that way?
If you were to just do the project with BBD, they would be happy to sell you 500,000 kilowatt-hours a year. And vice versa. Hampshire, you know, Cow Power would be happy to sell you more capacity as well.
Anything else?
No, just, it'd be good for the board to make a decision about how you would like us to proceed.
Sure, absolutely.
Right now? Well, it's been on the table for seven months.
I know, I'm just asking. Just a question.
Okay.
So Beth will know how to proceed once we're done with the conversation. I'll entertain a motion, one way or another.
I'm going to make a motion that we continue forward with the original agreement.
Thank you.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
The one thing is, if we split it, if we go from Cow Power, we're going to lose some money. The town will end up paying more money, and we have to, if we went all solar, the way I understand it.
Well, you have a little lower savings.
The lower savings to me is a plus.
It reduces your savings.
Well, I'm big on trying to reduce our increasing savings.
Yep, I completely understand. I just didn't want it, I didn't want it to have it suggested that there's actually an expenditure, it's just a reduction of benefits.
Okay, all right. You're a better accountant than I am. But bottom line, bottom line, I want what costs, what's going to be less expensive for the town.
Any other comments? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? I oppose.
No. I oppose.
Okay, okay, carries. We stay with the, thank you, Beth. Thank you.
Thank you.
But Ken, can you give me a boat tomorrow? Let me know what you'd like me to do next with respect to the settlement.
Okay.
Beth, just one quick thing. You were talking about the planet mark permit, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That's in Pittsfield, right?
No, that's Hinsdale.
Oh, Hinsdale, now?
That's Hinsdale.
Okay, thank you. Thought it started in Pittsfield originally.
No, it did. They have several projects. The Pittsfield projects, they've sold all the capacity. And this is the Hinsdale project, that they're going to actually build a megawatt. So it's a decent-sized project. They have quite a bit of capacity. And, you know, the town has agreed to be the host of the project and take some of the capacity.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, folks. Have a good night.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Oh, that's a few, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to skip down to number eight, since everybody's here for number eight. We'll go back to number seven. Okay, letter request to Representative Paul Mark. Mr. Boy, do you want to talk about this?
Sure, I'd love to. Richard, to your point, I apologize, this is totally my fault about the vagueness. I forgot to bring it up last week when the chairman asked for items for the next agenda. I emailed him and Ken Dur in the middle of the week, in fact, they have it here, and I, that's just the way I stated it. It's my fault. Should have been more specific. I agree, guilty.
Well, the reason for bringing it up, I sent a letter to Paul Mark in reference to the town's streetlights as an individual. And so I thought, when I saw it, that's what it was about.
Okay, I'm not sure where to start. Obviously, we have people here that are interested and probably have some valid comments regarding this issue. But when we started on this project back in, I believe, November, and we've had Mr. Lagerwellhill and several other representatives regarding the playing field situation in Dalton, the board undertook a suggestion to pursue the removal of an APR lien on town-owned property, 4.2 acres, on Cleveland Road, and have it transferred to another parcel of Dalton-owned property on High Street, which is 41 acres.
May I just say that we didn't actually take a vote?
No, we didn't.
No, no, that, okay.
But we all seem to be in agreement at the time.
I had reservations.
Yet, you had reservations about football, a specific issue.
I still do have reservations about football.
You didn't cast any reservations about the overall thing?
I have reservations about the overall thing as well.
Okay, fine.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you. Paul Mark has asked me to obtain a letter from the select board requesting his assistance in introducing and facilitating the necessary legislation to effect an APR lien slash lien transfer from one Dalton-owned property to another. And that's why I was on agenda to vote, to ask Paul Mark's office for assistance in effecting the pending legislation in the Massachusetts House of Representatives. Maybe I can speak to this issue a little bit more, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
At the time, we thought we might go ahead with this. I spoke with... At the time, we thought we might go ahead with this, I spoke with Representative Mark, and he took it to the House of Representatives, the House Counsel, and asked about the feasibility of this. And they came up with actually two options, but the only one that really suited our needs, and that was the transfer. The proposed legislation is in, is in your folder there. Okay? Now, maybe I should take the time to read it.
Yep.
Whereas the deferred operation of this act would tend to defeat its purpose, which is to release forthwith a certain agricultural preservation restriction, therefore is hereby declared to be an emergency law necessary for the immediate preservation of the public's convenience, an act relative to a certain parcel of land in the town of Dalton. Section one, notwithstanding any other general law or special law to the contrary pursuant to section 32 of chapter 7c and section 32 of chapter 184 of the general laws, the Commissioner of Capital Management, Commissioner of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, together with the Commissioner of the Department of Agriculture, sources may execute a certificate of release, which would, when executed, shall constitute a complete unconditional release of the parcel of land described as sex, in section two. From an agricultural preservation restriction originally granted to James Edgar Bargain, pardon, to the Commonwealth and recorded in book 1319, page 0801, and described as parcel two in exhibit A of such restriction at the registry of deeds. Upon execution, the Commissioner shall record such release in the middle registry of deeds that shall notify the town of Dalton of such recording forthwith. Section two, the parcel contains approximately 4.2 acres and is described as parcel 215260 in the office of the accessories of the town of Dalton and identified in book 651, page 25525 in the registry of deeds. The current owner of the land is the town of Dalton, under an order of taking dated November 3rd, 2005, and by deed recorded at the magistrate middle registry of deeds in book 4440, page 81. As a condition of the release in section one, the town of Dalton shall purchase, transfer, or dedicate usable or private land or place a conservation restriction or an agricultural preservation restriction as defined in sections 31 to 33, inclusive of chapter 184 of the general laws, to be held in the town of Dalton for permanent conservation or agricultural purposes, that has at least equivalent acreages, acreage as determined by the executive office of Energy and Environmental Affairs contained in the parcel of sections one and two. Now that's the proposed legislation. I can dwell a few minutes, and what the town is proposing that we do, when this, if and when this agricultural reservation restriction is lifted, is to convert that 4.2 acres into playing fields for the youth of Dalton. This will incorporate youth football, youth soccer, youth lacrosse, and it's even been mentioned, possible community gardens in one section of the parcel down by the river. There has been tremendous support for this project throughout the community. I just have to thank Selectman Mark Strout for his assistance in talking, doing, getting the CRA on board. I understand you're totally enthusiastic of this project. And Glenn Lagerwell, I would have asked him here tonight to spoke more to football operations, and there was some concern about football injuries to youth. And evidently he has a lot of material regarding that issue, which he could have discussed, and we can still get him here at another night. Now, the way the shortage of playing fields right now in Dalton appears is dead. Youth soccer, at this point in time, are playing their games literally in the cemetery over at Craneville, behind the fence, inside the cemetery. We also utilize other properties, such as the American Legion and the Central Berkshire Regiment Street of Deeds for playing fields. Both of those entities have asked us if we could see, all three of the entities have asked us if we could find our own playing fields for use by the town of Dalton in this youth program administered by the CRA. I think that sums it up what we would like to do, that's our hopes and dreams and goals, but I'm understanding now, there is some prospective questions or potentially opposition to this issue, and Bob, Mr. Chairman, if anybody would like to speak?
Yes.
If they want to make a statement, that's fine.
Yep.
If I can answer their questions, I'd be more than happy to.
Okay, go ahead, who wants to go first?
I think I'll go first. I know there are people who are going to speak too, thanks, John, for explaining.
Well, there's a lot more, I know. Again, this folder here, I got two folders I should have brought on site with more information, but I got, I can remember most of it, go ahead.
So anyway, so I'm just addressing what I feel as a resident of Dalton, Gerald Rose, 89 North Mountain Road, like the larger picture as a resident. So I want to say that I completely support putting a conservation restriction on Happy Land, and I see Happy Land as a potential place that could have walking trails that were marked and things, you know, tourism for outdoor recreation, the Berkshires is an economic engine and can bring people to our community who want to use the AT and use that and support businesses in Dalton. So I think econo, I'm going to approach this from an economic standpoint, forget how I feel about football, that's not where I want to go with that. That's not where I want to go with that.
Did you interject for a second here? You couldn't have said it better, that's exactly our goals, to protect the 41 acres of what's known as, I like to say, the pines over there.
So, but I don't think that really requires taking this out from under an agricultural restriction, I'd be happy to put that into a conservation restriction. But with respect to turning this agricultural land into playing fields, I have a number of questions and concerns, because it just, I see it as a bigger picture of embarking on something that is an expense, and at the outset, and an ongoing expense. And I question whether this town is really in a position to take on something that seems quite a bit of a luxury to me, actually, given that we've had kids growing up in this town for a long time, and my understanding is our demographic is we're having fewer children, but I don't know that for sure. But that's my understanding, and so I'm wondering, well, where have they been playing? And you're explaining to some extent, but still, it's been acceptable, and I have to question the expense, because, and these are just some of the things I know about, and I know there are other things I don't know about coming down the pipe, but, you know, we have a million dollar or more project for the EPA mandated stormwater outfall pipe repair. We have potentially $7 million to pay the Pittsfield for their water treatment plant. We are on hook, we've already borrowed $100,000 for the Who's House, we okayed a million dollar bond for the old high school demolition. You just recently raised sewer fees 23%. So, you know, there are lots of ways to keep raising the cost for the people in the town without necessarily raising taxes and hitting the cap. You know, I'm concerned about, and we already have, you know, more than 30 properties in the town that are delinquent on their, or they can't keep up with their taxes, we've got a large number of children living in poverty, so we're not a town with a lot of money, these are not times aplenty. And I have to question whether creating new ball fields, which in just starting out would be an expense, but then, of course, you have to maintain ball fields, and we don't even know if, you know, what the issues might be with water or whatever, just to maintain good quality ball fields. Where are people going to park, you're going to have parking, it's going to, you know, maybe ultimately bathrooms. This is an expense. To me feels like a luxury, when I feel like you can play other places, and we are obviously really concerned about providing our kids with a better high school, and even the school they're in, like, when I look at priorities, how come we're not giving those kids better equipment right now, better computers, if we've got money to spend on something? To me, this just seems like, kind of not, it just seems not irresponsible. I mean, from a financial perspective, this is just a misplacement of priorities, in my opinion, in terms of how we would be spending money. Maybe we could sell that land under the agricultural restriction and it could be farmed. I mean, that's, that's an opportunity to make some money potentially on it, and even so collect some taxes, if it's something that the town owns and we sold it to be farmed. Farming is becoming actually more popular among some people, I'm surprised among my friends how many of their kids are becoming farmers, so I don't know about that potential, it's nothing I, I'm familiar with, you know, the details of, but it occurs to me. So, that's kind of where I'm looking at it, as a resident, saying, is this where we're going to spend our money and our resources and our energies working on, when I fill the kids? And if we're going to make a new high school, can we somehow roll better fields into the idea of, or whatever's going on with the school?
I can answer that part of it. Fields is part of the high school, but it's not included, ball fields are not included in that.
I know, but I'm saying, if that is an important thing to be able to have better fields or something.
If I can respond, Cheryl. You're concerned about money?
Yes.
If I may say just a couple of things. What originally started this issue is the condition of the fields over at Pine Grove Park because of overlapping of use and continually lose. We're facing, as we did a couple of years ago, and by overlapping, I mean, the baseball field overlaps the baseball field, right? So the football field basically destroys the baseball field, right? Couple of years ago, we had to dig it up, shut it down for a year, and repair it, cost $40,000, right, Ken?
Yes.
The bear is right there. Now we're facing the same, same issue right now, which precipitated that the football and the soccer would be better off moving out of Pine Grove Park. So instead of spending money, we're going to be saving, if it was $40,000 a few years ago, it was probably six or seven years ago, it's probably $80,000 now. And as far as just straight out expenses for this parcel of land and its future development, there are no costs. It's all going to be taken over by volunteer labor, we have, Mark, how many football coaches and they're ready with their labor?
Engineers, construction, that kind of stuff.
So you don't want to put lights there, you don't want to?
No, no lights, no structures.
No parking lot, no bathroom.
The only structure will be a goalpost, that can be taken down.
Where are people going to park them?
They'll be parking there, and we already have equipment in gravel that's been donated. There's been a tremendous outpour of volunteers every day. People stop me and say, what can I do? I say, don't do nothing yet, until we get this up and running, and then we can come forward and put all these, utilize all the energy and contributions that people want to bring forward to this project. Now, as far as maintenance, down the road, certainly the CRA will be overseeing this, and that would be in their overall budget. By maintenance, you mean putting lines on it, even the coaches could probably do that themselves.
Well, it has to be mowed, and sometimes fields like out of PCC, you know, end up finding there are some water issues, and then you've got to do pole regrading or a fixing.
There is no.
You know, ball fields require certain maintenance.
One party brought to our attention that legal bills, there are no legal bills. All this legislation is being drafted and provided to us by the House Counsel of the Massachusetts House of Representatives, and through Representative Paul Mark, who is also an attorney. And certainly our attorney, Colville Page, have reviewed this, and we have done that. See, it necessitates any kind of action on the town's part, such as a special town meeting or anything like that, and so far it's indicated, the answer to that is no.
So are you saying it would not cost the town anything to do this? Is that what you're saying? I'm trying to.
I'm pretty much, yeah, I will say that unequivocally, yes.
Zero.
Yeah. Well, I did say, down the road, it may, it's possible to be something like maintenance caused by the CRA, who they would administer it for in the town. But, as far as any out of pocket cause? No.
I have a question.
Yep.
You mentioned that they had to do some repair work in the other fields that cost $40,000.
The last time they did it.
Right. Why wouldn't you have that going forward in these fields at some point?
Because they don't overlap it. You have a big.
It really seems to be awful high repair, just from overlapping.
I think.
Go ahead.
Sorry, please. It's unfortunate that we're at the wintertime now, because I think anybody that took a walk over there in the fall time or during the summer, you would see the condition of the field. They were saying, Glenn Lagerwell was saying, they had one of the coaches break his ankle there this past fall, because one of the divots that were out there. My daughter plays softball, the balls are continuously being hit out, it's just, it's a nightmare, but to walk that field, you would see how bad the condition is and what the kids are playing in over there.
Is this way it's always been?
Since I've been out that way, since my kids have been playing.
All these years?
Yeah, because of the congestion and lack of playing fields.
That field never gets a break. Time for that field, it's from softball, they play, there's varsity JV games, there's house league games, there's, there's, the baseball is being played on the bigger field, and then you have football, you have seniors, you have juniors, you have, it's constantly dug up and dug up and dug up.
They play lacrosse there during the spring. So the fields are all ravving and overused almost year round. They don't get any break at all, so constantly, consistently, or yeah, consistently. As a result, they break down in structure and have to be dug up in near entirety, closed for a year, and repaired, and it costs. The last time it was $40,000. This time, well, you'd have to get requests or proposals, but I'm guessing the price didn't go down. So we're off the bat, we're way ahead financially. Okay, anyone else?
Second?
Mr. Green.
On the question of the APR.
Yes.
Do you know what APR stands for?
Agricultural Preservation Restriction.
So, you know what preservation stands for?
Yeah, I do, actually.
So, could you just explain it?
The Agricultural Preservation Restriction Act provides for, and I quote, "A conservation restriction or an agricultural restriction." Now granted.
That's not a definition of what the APR is.
But that's what it allows.
No, 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 what you're saying is this bill is saying that trading a conservation restriction on a piece of land is going to be adequate to take a piece of APR land out. And the bill may say that, but the rules do not. The, the trade of agricultural restriction land requires agricultural land, not just a conservation restriction. The bill proposes that, but the bill would not meet the requirement of the APR. The agricultural preservation restriction is an in perpetuity restriction to preserve agricultural land for agricultural use. The state, as well as the Department, US Department of Agriculture, provide funds to protect in perpetuity agricultural land. Their goal is to maintain a, the best soils, maintain those, and I think they're described as the prime agricultural soils, is a requirement of land being put under an APR, and the goal is to prevent as much of that prime agricultural soil to being converted to other uses. So they pay the landowners the development value for that land to maintain it in agriculture, and this is put in the deed, and it's part of Article 97. Are you familiar with Article 97?
I'm sure I have it in my files here, yes.
Well, Article 97 is the in perpetuity protection of the agricultural restrictions, the conservation restrictions, and there are a number of other public benefits that are addressed in Article 97. So, the.
Can I just ask you a question?
Yep.
Is that the article where it provides for releases of these liens?
No.
For community good?
No. Article 97 is the, it's in the state constitution, it's kind of a unique thing that Massachusetts has in its constitution that not all states have, for the permanent protection of the, of property that provides a public benefit through its natural condition, and that includes And the, so the, the state, and with funds from the USD. and that includes agriculture. And the, so, the state, and with funds from the USDA, has, you know, purchased these agricultural restrictions to preserve this land in agricultural use. And in the mid-eighties, the original proposal by the Berkshire Natural Resources Council was to have a three-farm APR. Three farms that have butted each other, all under an agricultural preservation restriction, and they provided funds to get the appraisals done, which is the first step to determine what the development value is. And so, this process started for the Barton Farm, the Muzany Farm, and the Crane Farm, and in that they all butted having this contiguous agricultural land base, which was part of the goal, one, as well as the concern over the loss of agricultural land to other uses, was the fragmentation of agricultural land into smaller, less viable pieces. So, part of the goal is to increase the continuity of agricultural land and prevent the fragmentation of agricultural land and maintain the viability as a result of that. So, having three abutting farms was of real value to this program, which has the goal of preserving agricultural continuity and preventing fragmentation. So, the state supported this, and over a decade roughly between when the first purchase happened, which is on the Barton Farm, and the last purchase, which was on the Muzany Farm, was a ten-or-so-year span of time. The town, I'm pretty sure in all of these Article 97, whether it's a conservation restriction or an APR, has to sign off on it. Has the opportunity to say, "We don't want it" at the time, and the town has to sign off for it to go through. And obviously, the town of Dalton did. What they do at the time have the opportunity to say, "No, we are not going to sign off on this," and then it won't go through. But the, so, the purpose of, you know, agricultural viability, continuity, trying to prevent fragmentation is part of why all APRs are not subdivisible. That is one of the things that when you sell your restriction to the state, you are selling your right to subdivide, because the goal is to maintain continuity and not have fragmentation. So, that is part of what you agree to when you take the money. So, when we took the money, when Barton's took the money, when Muzany's took the money, we agreed to these conditions. We would maintain it in agricultural use. We would not subdivide it. So, this is the list of conditions that are part of an APR, that the landowner is paid for, and it goes in the deed. And so, from that point forward, the deed carries these restrictions. It affects the value of the land as a result of selling your development rights to the state. If you go to sell your land, it has no development rights. It's worth less. It's a reduction in its value that you got paid for. And if somebody buys it from you, they buy it knowing that it has this restriction on it, and you don't get paid twice for your development rights. You got paid once, now if you sell it, it has no development rights. Whoever buys it from you can't develop it. So, they don't pay you development value. They pay you agricultural value. So, that, if Barton's had chose to sell that property, they would have had to sell it as one piece, both sides of the road, and they would have, it would have no development value to the purchaser. It would be strictly for agricultural use, and they would probably get paid agricultural value. So, when the town takes that land, in a sense, they are like any other buyer. The, they're taking a deed that has these restrictions on it, and they can't change that any more than somebody who bought it. So, the, and that's the goal of the agricultural preservation restriction, is to preserve agricultural land in perpetuity. So, that bill, and bills can be presented to take land out of Article 97, which would be an APR conservation restriction, and that it requires a two-thirds majority vote of both House and Senate, and the Secretary of EEA's approval, and the governor's signature. And this rarely happens. The reason is that when we, for this APR, the example is that the Berkshire Natural Resources Council, a land-protection nonprofit, put a lot of time and work into this proposal to the state where the APR on these three farms worked with landowners, worked with the state to get this to happen. The public very much supported this in all the APRs. Many APRs, there is a portion of the money between what the state is willing to pay and what the landowner wants to get is often money that is publicly raised, or there is some other match that happens to bridge that gap. And land conservation organizations like the Berkshire Natural Resources Council works very hard and has over thirty-five years and many properties across the county, has put together the funds to make these APRs happen. And so, there's, they happen because there's a lot of public support for it. It happens because there's federal support for the funds coming from the USDA to the state, so the state has the funds to purchase the APRs. So, they are not easily converted to some other use, because that's the whole point of them, is that they not be converted to some other use. And in this particular case, that, if you look on a land map, it shows that area as prime agricultural soils, as it's important habitat because of its proximity to the river. It is not land that is going to, that it makes any sense, once protected, to take out of protection. And I think that there is the, the importance of this protected land to the community of organizations and the public that feel strongly that agricultural land, where it can be protected, should be protected, and where it is protected, should stay protected, is a very strong voice, and it isn't going to watch the, this parcel get taken out without, you know, a lot of opposition. And the, the ability to get two-thirds of both houses to support this, when land conservation organizations across the state are going to oppose it, and will certainly stand up and oppose any legislator or state senator that wants to support it. I don't think there's a snowball's chance in hell that two-thirds would come out in face of all those land conservation organizations and say, "I'm going to risk my seat and go against these organizations so the town of Dalton can have four acres of ball field." I don't see that, that as being, quote, "the emergency legislation" that is basically what you need. It needs to be a serious emergency. There has to be a hugely important reason for land to be taken out of Article 97. It can be done, but it requires a tremendous need. It doesn't happen just because of the lack of ball fields without any other possibility of being able to find a place for a ball field. And I think it would take a very strong case that there was no other option in the community for this purpose, for Article 97 to be revoked on this parcel. It just, it doesn't happen like that. It's a, it's a very powerful restriction, and I, so, I just don't think that it's worth the, the town's effort at something that I really don't think has a chance of being successful, just because that's what APRs are for, and they're, they're not easily undone.
Yeah, I'd like--
Can I just--
Good response.
Okay. Now, are you arguing anybody or anything? But all these facts, alleged facts that you presented, have been presented to the House Counsel attorneys who drafted this legislation. They don't feel the same way you do, Mr. Crane, but I am not an attorney, but I do know how to read, and I read the original, and I signed my name to the original APR authorizations for the town of Dalton, for your, for your family's place, Muzany's and this. And I remember the auspices under it was sold to us, that it was going to maintain, not as agriculture, but as open space. And--
I--
Well, not here, not anywhere.
You don't find that--
The re, okay, but to redefine what we're trying to do here is, we are exactly trying to preserve thirty, forty-one, excuse me, acres of open space, also known as the pines and happy land over here, of industrial, commercial intrusion. That's a real possibility. No wonder Future Board can undertake and sell this to a gravelling operation, which borders it on the western side. That's one of our thoughts. Yes, as Ms. Rose pointed out, we're going to preserve it for open space, for walking trails, biking trails, there's even a pond and a fishing hole up there, and everything else that comes with a beautiful piece of property, even agricultural, hey, you had potential agricultural purposes. I think there's strong support. There seems to be strong support from your point of view, but, excuse me if I'm wrong, but you have a very vested interest in this. You are, correct me if I'm wrong, you are the butter. Am I not correct?
Not, well, yeah. I mean, with the--
With the road in between.
Well, no, with, because that piece of power line that cuts through there belongs to Eversource.
Yep.
That we abut Eversource, they abut Eversource, but we don't abut each other directly.
Okay. What about on the north side of the road?
Right.
You do abut.
Well, no, we abut Eversource, and they abut Eversource, but we don't, because Eversource is in between us, and they own that land, then we, but I mean, it's a small difference, but it's--
I just have one final question. Aside from your agricultural involvement and specificity of the law, we obviously disagree, or the town council, or House Counsel disagrees with what you say, but don't you think this is a good community-wide project, and it has widespread support?
I, I think that a really great project would be for the town to work out something with Patrica for the land on the other side, where the land that Patrica got from Warren, and figure out a way to create, I mean, that's a lot of acres there. That could be ball fields, could be park, could be a lot of community and, you know, public benefit in that area.
We still don't go on the discussion. We did look into that. First of all, there's a hundred and twenty, right now, there's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in taxes owed on that parcel. If we took it over, we would have to forgive this, and also the possible contamination issue. Our attorney advises to stay away from that parcel. So, that's on that parcel.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Ms. Muzany?
Okay.
I just wanted to supplement that, that the APR program specifically says it preserves, protects agricultural land, specially designated farmland soils, which are a finite resource, from being built upon for agricultural purposes or used for any activity detrimental to agriculture. I know you guys got my summary from the last one, so I'm not going to repeat that, but since that time, I've been meeting with NRCS for the purpose of planning my own farm and looking at the farmland soils map, and that particular parcel is the top-grade farmland soils. It's better than pretty much all my land. That, that particular parcel is the best farmland soils that we have in Dalton.
So, we grow--
So, that parcel in particular is valuable for agriculture, and it is not comparable by any means to forest land, you know, forty-one acres. I haven't looked at, I'm not really that familiar with that particular parcel. I know where it is. I haven't looked at the soils there, but I can tell you that that is, that's apples and oranges in terms of comparison.
So, what you're saying is, this would be a great place to have playing fields because the soil--
No, no, because--
The soil is adaptable to growing grass.
But you know what? I'm actually planning an organic farm, and I'm going to be downhill from that, so there's going to be all kinds of conflicts potentially if you were to put turf in there. I'm a beekeeper. That, it says specifically, things that will be detrimental to agriculture. So, the typical things that are on a ball field are detrimental to bees, to honeybees. They're detrimental to organic agriculture. And another issue, that whole entire field drains through my yard and down my driveway, which is another issue, but those are not comparable, and that's a very highly valuable parcel within that whole APR. Also, our farms did work together and did consider the fact that these other farms were joining in to create, like he said, a complete, you know, a contiguous tract. And as another aside, another background motivation that wasn't really addressed in the APR system is that this is part of biocore habitat. Are you familiar with that?
No.
That's the, Wakona Falls, Brook, and this whole area forms a green tract. There's a bio map that looks at the biodiversity of the state of Massachusetts, and this is part of the core habitat for the entire state. And it has endangered species. It has all kinds of other protection that is included in a green way. It's very important for animals to have a contiguous environment, and although farming is not, you don't think of it as, as like wildlands where you have, you know, where it supports the wild animals, but it's very important for bob-- it supports the wild animals, but it's very important for bobcat, fox, coyote, raccoon, opossum, all these animals. I mean, I track these animals all the time, I'm out there skiing, I mean, I'm actually a vertebrate biologist by trade, and I can tell you that these corridors, and that field in particular, all of them cross from the power lines in Dickens all the way through. They don't go on the power lines, they go through there and through my yard and down. And that's, you know, so there's, there's other impacts to the wildlife and the biodiversity. And when he talks about, you know, opposition, we can reach out to these organizations and, and, and address these things, and I, this is my background, I have years of data of these, these, this using is a very important animal wildlife corridor. So that's not part of the APR program, but it's, when they, when they did it, they mentioned that that they'd need to have, if you look at a map, it's not actually mapped, a lot of times, it's not mapped as ag land, it's mapped as green land. It's part of the green corridor. So it's, you know, it's a particularly valuable parcel, not just because it borders my property. You know, I think, I don't think it's comparable, and I actually coached soccer, we never had a shortage of soccer fields, we were always playing, there was two, there was, there was an empty field at all times, there was three, three fields, so...
That's not even debatable.
No, I'm just saying, in terms of, you know, there can be shifting around of schedules, they don't have to, you know, I don't think that this particular plan is, parcel is necessary for a ball field.
I appreciate everything everybody's saying. We could table this for like two weeks and then bring, uh, like, uh, football and youth sports people, have them come in, so we could hear their side, so maybe you guys could hear their side, you guys, you guys could, we can get this more information out there.
Why don't we bring the APR people to them? You know, the people who...
Well, we don't, we can wait till the town meeting then. I, I was just trying to come up with a solution, so people could hear both sides.
Okay. I think there are other people that are here to speak on this.
Would anyone else like to speak on, yeah?
I mean, I just wanna say, I'm skeptical that there won't be costs for the town, I just find that hard to believe.
I agree.
It's just too hard to believe. And the other thing, if somebody does get injured there, and that's our town ball field, and after what I just heard from Dickens, I think it's improbable you're gonna get that. But if somebody was injured and they choose to sue, they are suing...
It could happen in any of our...
Yeah, that's a pretty town.
So they're suing the town?
Just like high and growth, just like...
And that means we have to have insurance for that spot that costs more, or it's wrapped into what we already pay?
I think it's a good idea to have the other, this may be the CRA and the, uh, football I think it's a good idea that we have the other people here too, so we can hear both sides.
To find out if you're liable for something more, do you have to pay more in liability costs? I mean, it's just too hard to believe that there won't be liabilities and costs for this as well. And, uh, I'd just like to say also that I wish the same amount of energy would go into concerns about keeping our schools academically as strong as they need to be. There's a lot of attention going on here, and, uh, what I see of the high schools, it's been needing attention for a long time.
Thank you, Annie.
I too voiced the same types of things we've heard, and I will keep my comments very short. I support the agricultural preservation restriction as indicated by Dickens. I think that this particular piece of property should be left as it is. I think that, um, there will be costs, no matter what I'm hearing here, I can't believe there won't be costs. As soon as I'm, um, hearing that there has to be drainage created so that it does not drain down on Amy's farm, there's, you know, already there's a massive fee right there. Going forward into the future, it will cost money to be maintained, should be used this way. I also question the wisdom of giving up 41 acres for four acres. I wonder, um, where that particular, um, idea came from. It is also not mutually exclusive that you could create your own, um, conservation restriction on that property without involving this 4.2 acre piece. Those are my comments at this time.
I just have one quick other question. Well, do you know why the Legion doesn't want the kids to play on their field? Is it chewing up their field and that's why? Because I would like to see more cooperative use of a field that I look like it's empty a lot of the time.
The Legion's always been there for us, but, you know, sometimes they just want to, uh, you know, stench the flow of activity or scale it back a little bit, because it's somewhat of a financial burden to them.
So it's costing them to have us play on their field?
Yeah, I think they also, the Legion is undergoing, uh, being a member of the Legion, uh, um, reorganizational process. They're floating various ideas about what they might do with their property because of the, uh, reduction in the number of veterans that are available for membership now. I mean, at one point, it was 600, now they're down to 300. And, uh, just, uh, they're looking at a lot of different things with the building and the property. They put up a cell tower, that was one of the things they did. They're thinking, one of another things they're thinking about is possibly, uh, building a smaller building, just for the, the member, a member-type building, and, uh, well, I shouldn't talk about what they're gonna do. They're, they're undergoing a reorganization.
So that is a big field that we don't know the future of, that potentially even could be an option.
Richard?
Hi, Richard Hall, 164 Green Ridge. I'm gonna keep it very brief. Uh, one of the things that you said, John, that you, you voted originally to turn this piece of land into agricultural land.
Yep.
And now we're gonna take it out of that, but what happens in 10 years, just as you said with the Legion, they're changing their outlook on their property, and the town may change their outlook on this particular piece of property, whereas it, uh, guaranteed in that legislation, they can't be used for anything else development or anything later on. Just my observation from what I'm hearing. But I also think Mark's point of, uh, two weeks to hear different sides is good, uh, being part of the process of, of hearing it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't believe we have a meeting in two weeks, though.
I threw that out.
We have one, okay. I don't want people to come and there's no meeting.
Well, maybe don't take an action until...
I'll put it on, if we can put on Fridays for future agendas, if you do.
Okay, yeah, let's put, uh, let's put that on for future agendas. Uh, we gotta actually vote to table it first.
Make a motion to table this for, uh, replace standard items for future agendas.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, it's under discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, everyone, I really appreciate your time. We'll take a two-minute break and then we'll... I ran out of my supply of lodges, I was gonna be... Number nine, first, we'll go on, budgets.
Number nine?
Yes. I don't know.
Oh, it's already tabled.
We gotta vote to table that.
Okay.
Okay.
I move that we table number nine. I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that, for record, that is the discussion on elimination of health insurance for the select board, we're gonna table that to next meeting, okay? All right. Okay, Department of Public Reviews and Update, Ken?
Okay, we're doing, I'll go through what it all means at the end, but why don't we start going in numerical order, and we'll jump up to 141, that's the Board of Assessors, and there's a related budget, which is revaluation, it's, Department's 141 and 142. We'll see 141, um, the assessors, there's a small change in salaries and a decrease in expenses overall, that budget's up by less than one, one percent. The head county assessor's the principal assessor, uh, second assessor, part-time, uh, part-time clerk assessor, and, uh, that constitutes the personnel in the department. Is there anything you'd like to add, Laura, about your budget?
No, that's straightforward. Any questions for Laura on the budget? DA?
DA.
Yep. The second budget is 142. Now, you may remember that we're trying to budget a little bit of money in each year to keep up with the revaluation process. It used to be a triennial revaluation, going out to five years, but we're gonna be, I think, four years.
We're four this time around, they're staggering them until we get, we're all in line and then...
Until we get on the five-year cycle. So we'll be doing ours in four years, and you can see, got a little bit of a budget requested in the coming fiscal year, the big one will be next year.
Any questions? DA?
DA.
Thank you, Laura. The next budget, we'll come back to them, is, um, they'd like to consider is 222 Communications. Communications, for record, they're very heavy areas here. Do you have any questions about the details? But again, the, there's a department head, three full-time dispatchers, as well as five reserve dispatchers. Um, the budget really goes, according to our cost of living increase, there were, um, according to non-represented employees, and the other is for the employees that are covered by a labor agreement, and that's all of the dispatchers, including the reserve dispatchers. So there's a, an increase of about $6,000 in salaries for that department and no increase in expenses. Something you'd like to add, Gavin?
No.
Any questions? DA?
DA.
Thank you.
Next, let's do the Police Department. There's a related budget in the Police Department, and that's the Animal Control Officer, so this Department's 210 and 292. Chief, as always, has prepared a very detailed budget with lots of comments on it, and you remember the Department has a chief and patrol sergeant, eight patrol officers and five reserve officers, it's a total of 15, and two civilian personnel, it's the administrative assistant and the animal control officer. In the Police Department budget, all of the increases are in accordance with the labor agreement and the other, uh, the agreements, uh, that, the cost of living agreements or, awards code that we're giving to our non-represented employees, there's a small increase in, uh, expenses, I think the chief can explain primarily for, um, contractual items in that budget. Chief, anything you'd like to explain?
Sure. The first page of my two-page budget for police is salary. It will represent the 1.75% every pond increase for union and non-union, as well as two-step increases for P8 and P7, which is why you see two lines for P7 and P8. That, again, is contractual step increase. You may ask, well, if it's a 1.75% increase, uh, on page two for total salaries, you'll see it's going up to a total of $13,790, but it's only a 1.62% increase. That's because, you recall, we had, uh, for last year's budget, Officer Mosey and Much were at a higher step, uh, for longevity of five years, and we replaced them with a lower, so, um, despite the increase, it, it's not the full 1.75% increase that you would see. The more complicated part is the expenses, um, although I know we're to level fund, uh, the, I believe you got a color version? Did you get a color version with red?
No, we didn't.
Okay, well, I provided a color version, but we have a color copy here downstairs, you apparently have a black and white upstairs. I do have, actually, versions here for you. And actually, that's good, because I made one correction on the health...
Thank you.
...uh, agree, the fitness agreement with the union. There you go. It just, it's easier to read the changes by having the red stick out at you. Um, so everything was level funded. Uh, the first red in the, in the description column, as you go down from the top, you're gonna see, uh, it's for software support, that's our IMC in-house database. It does everything for us, payroll, um, evidence tracking, all our report database, citations, accident reports, so it's an integral part of our service. It is a single source, um, so we're not, uh, we're not required to go to bid. I got an increase, uh, quote here that shows it's an increase from last year of 1,150. That's high. Um, I just wanna make sure there's enough, but I think it's gonna be $400 short. Um, that's the difficulties of getting, you know, quotes, uh, in December and January for a February budget for something that's not gonna start until, uh, July. Um, so, I just wanted to make sure there was enough in that category. As you go down, you'll see the next change is actually a new line item that we didn't have last year's budget. Uh, that was recommended from the town accountant, and we used to, uh, pay for a lot of things out of the other supply column. Uh, she requested that we utilize other purchases under law. That's usually when you have a vendor providing us services, so backing up our server. Um, we have a, uh, a vendor come in and clean out our cells from toxic, um, things that occur in a cell when we have a prisoner, um, that's beyond our capabilities to make sure that they're cleaned appropriately. Uh, we use a cleaner to clean the cell blankets, and apparently, uh, for her law purposes and reporting, that's a, a more appropriate column. So what I did is I took, we were paying some of that out of a lower line and called other supplies. I took $1,800 from other supplies and put it in that new line, but after calculating what I think I'm gonna need, um, in that, I, I asked for a $700 increase for a total of $2,500 in that line, uh, to back up our server, uh, clean blanket cells. And, uh, another thing we've started to do is, uh, for evidentiary purposes, um, if we impound, tow and impound a car, 'cause it's our action, we incur a fee, we have to pay that vendor to tow and impound it. Um, so, uh, I've used drug seizure money in the past, uh, it's just not gonna be there for this fiscal year, so I thought it'd be smart to budget for that. Um, then if you go down, you'll see the next, uh, the third red notation is in the gasoline line. I'm decreasing that to show a three, a three-year historic average of approximately $18,000, so I decreased it by $2,500. What I'm trying to do is where I increase in other line items, I'm trying to decrease where I can to kinda maintain, uh, a, a status quo. Again, no changes until you get down to, uh, the fourth notation red is, um, uh, other supplies. Again, I took $1,800 and threw it up above in that new line, again, trying to keep as much as I can level funded. The next, uh, two lines, you're gonna see that there's an increase of $100 per the police contract. It's both for patrol and reserve officers, negotiated a $100 clothing allowance increase, which is really reasonable because the cost of, uh, our equipment does go up, uh, annually and, and as technology to the equipment improves, um, they need that $100. We're nearing the bottom line, 57, uh, 210, 5731. You'll see an increase, I'm asking, of $875. That's, it says chief's dues. We pay a lot out of that to include our membership to, uh, in, in the Berkshire County Law Enforcement Council, which is a, uh, a sharing, uh, a sharing or in the county, but it's also fiduciary to, uh, share resources and personnels for training and emergencies, man-made or otherwise. It also includes what my, uh, the memberships to Western Mass Chiefs, the Mass Chiefs, uh, Western Mass, uh, Law Enforcement Council, and NSPN, which is a information-sharing network. We are able to resolve or solve a lot of B and E crimes due to that, computer access to that computer base. And then it's also the Greater Boston Purchasing Compact, that allows us to purchase equipment in accordance with state procurement procedures without having to get three bids, because we're a member, they do the bidding and get it. It's almost like having a state contract. Finally, the last red notation you'll see is in Health Club Memberships. For the contract, it allows for up to $200 per, uh, full-time member excluding myself, so there's nine full-time members each year. Well, 200, up to 200, times nine is 1,800. I wanna have that budgeted rather than the low budget. We always decided, well, we'll get it from another line. It's to the point where I can't take it from another line, so I just wanna fund what's contracted, and that's why I'm asking for the increase. Overall, because I moved money around, it's simply, I'm asking for an increase of, in expenses of $2,125.
How's the cruiser situation? Are we running a cruiser in the near future?
That's the only capital project where, I just wasn't able to get it in time. Um, I'm hoping to have it by, uh, February 12th when I was originally on, so it shouldn't be too much longer. Um, we're, we're looking at getting a quote of one cruiser, taking the three-year-old cruiser and upfitting it for canine. cruiser and upfitting it for K-9. The K-9 car is the oldest car. It's the only Crown Vic sedan we have, rear-wheel drive, the only rear wheel we have. Everyone else, every other car's all-wheel, where we live. It's a better fit. So it's time to upgrade the K-9. We wanna keep the K-9 program for at least another five years, so it makes sense. I don't wanna give the K-9 unit the brand-new car. I want that to go to patrol for transportation of prisoners and everything, and all-around vehicles. So we will give him a three-year-old utility vehicle, all-wheel drive, and outfit it. So that's what I'll be, I'm figuring maybe 56. It's usually 44 for a cruiser. I think 56 would be a high number, but I don't know what an outfit for K-9 is. Unfortunately, we can't take the equipment from the old Crown Vic sedan and bring it over to the new. That's what we would try to do, because it's from a sedan Crown Vic to a utility. You can't do that.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief?
Just, I got one thing, chief. Just, everything seems to be going really good, doing a great job. Constant compliments from the public.
Thanks.
For the Police Department and Highway Department. I'll tell them when they get here, but, but yeah, it's constant praise between those two departments.
We just went through evaluations for our annual, we do annual assessments, and I'm really pleased to see everyone inside say the same thing. It's important to hear from the outside, but it's equally important to hear from the inside. Especially around you guys, I've seen a really big step-up from the senior officers, the top three. You know, Sergeant Furlong's great, but you have Officer Marley, Deanna Strout, and John Marley really putting their best foot forward and tolerating youth who just want a run-and-gun, and they have to pull them back and say, no, there's some legal things we gotta take care of here. But without them, it wouldn't have been that way. So thank you. But we're seeing that come back to us in the assessments as well.
I agree with Mark. I would just add, this is also a very good presentation, your budget presentation.
I went a little bit longer, just because.
No, I think it's great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other questions for the chief? DA?
DA.
Okay, thank you, chief.
All right, thank you.
Next one is Animal Control. You wanna, Animal Control, chief, is wisely preparing. It's 292. He was wisely preparing for the day when our Animal Control Officer decides to retire, and so there's additional, both salary and expense items in 292, cover that occurrence.
So the overall, the overall increase to Animal Control in salary is the $2,838. It's a big, you know, jump of 12%. You see the percentage, 12.47%, but it's $2,800 to have someone come on as an assistant, get them trained. It's very difficult. You're required to have the training in Boylston. The only academy to have is one time a year in Boylston. You have to commute. So to try to put out, you know, get interest outside and have them do that on their own is not gonna happen. So for $2,800, that will get somebody out to the other end of the state once a week. It's every Friday. I forget how many hours. I think it's six hours total, maybe seven hours total with the commute. I factored in minimum wage, because, you know, it's not guaranteed they'll stay. It gives them, it will generate interest for them to go at $11 an hour minimum wage, and then enough time to train under Mike McClay, who I anticipate will be leaving us after 15 and a half years, in a year and a half. We will miss, with this budget cycle, the March Academy. So we're fortunate that he's staying beyond the 15-year mark, and he's staying an extra, you know, he's staying further. So it'd give us enough time to actually have somebody waiting to take over when somebody leaves, which would be nice.
Any questions? DA?
DA.
Thank you, chief.
Now we'll just go through these budgets in alphabetical order, the Select Board 122, Mr. Chairman, stable at the time being.
Yeah, I'll stay with that the next week.
Okay, table at. Town Manager's Office. See, there are no change in expenses, and the cost of living increase according to employees that are not represented in the department. So the overall increase of $2,554.
Which one do you have, Ken? I'm sorry.
123.
Okay.
123 is Town Manager.
Any questions?
DA.
A little bit of retroactive question, Bob. Maybe I'm asleep. Why do we pull a form, action on the Select Board's budget?
Oh, because it's, it's related to the other, the discussion about.
Item number nine, Agenda. John Bartels wants to speak to this item. He's not here. I understand that. And that's the reason?
We made, we had approved that as an item number nine to be delivered, to be discussed at the next meeting. You voted on that.
Yeah. But that was a discussion about insurance benefit.
Yes.
I don't know how that directly reflects on the operational budget.
It would be nice to have all of us involved.
Yeah, that'd be great, Bob. I'm just curious.
Nope, I just soon have all five of us here for that one, okay?
Next budget, I'm going in numerical order, is 132. That's the Reserve Fund. Remember, that's the fund that's under the control of the Finance Committee. When we have unforeseen or anticipated expenditures that exceed the appropriation authorized by town meeting, we go to the Finance Committee. You can see Sandy Albano's done a nice little run-out here of how much was transferred in the last 10 years or so from other departments, to other departments from the Reserve Fund. So we're recommending that the Reserve Fund appropriation remains $65,000, no change.
DA?
DA.
The next is group purchasing. Participate in a group purchasing arrangement that is water-backed by the City of North Adams and its purchasing department. This has been $600 for a number of years, up from $400 a few years ago.
DA.
Town audit, we do, we have to do an audit every other year. The anticipated cost is $16,000. That's $1,000 more than two years ago. That's how we did it.
DA?
DA.
Legal counsel, and you all know that our town council's Copelman Page. Again, there's a nice run-out of actual town council expenses from fiscal year 12 through fiscal year 18 to date. We're recommending no change in that budget of $60,000.
DA?
Next budget is 154. That's Reporting Secretary, and those are the intermittent employees who record the minutes of all of our meetings. We're increasing that budget this year, because during this current year, we gave the Board of Health and Cemetery Trustees, so Reporting Secretaries. We've anticipated that the Cable Committee might be activated again, and that's a few other meetings. So altogether, we're recommending an additional $1,120. It's big on a percentage basis, but I don't think it's material to the discussion. It's simply additional expenses for covering those boards. That includes some office work performed by those Reporting Secretaries for the boards they serve.
DA?
DA.
The next is Development and Industrial Commission. That includes the activities of the Development Authority as well, and there's some minimal expenses for dues and memberships and meetings.
DA?
Recommending no change in that. Senator, Waits and Measures, we're recommending no change in that. A $1,449 stipend anticipated for a person appointed. If we should hire out the Sealer Waits and Measures through an intermunicipal arrangement, that would be a $5,000 expenditure, or that could be done by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts presently. That position is vacant, and we're looking to fill it as soon as we can.
DA?
DA.
This just came in this afternoon. It's Budget 310, Central Berkshire Regional School District. John Bartels sent over the tentative budget, which we anticipate the school committee taking up this Thursday. But since we have the numbers, and the chairman asked you to have this for you, take a look at, and you can see that that budget is going to be up 1.29%. That's an increase of $106,370 on a budget of over $8.3 million.
And they're taking this up Thursday, Ken?
Yeah, the school committee will take it up.
This is the proposed budget.
This is the proposed budget. So the school committee will take it up Thursday. The following week, there'll be seven town advisory committee and a public hearing.
DA?
DA.
Thank you, John.
Town Engineer, Department 401. Last year, you may remember that we increased that significantly. We held that down for a number of years, but we kept running the problems where we had something going on, and we needed town engineering help, and so we increased that to try to get our projects out faster. And so we're recommending no change in that budget. It's $20,000.
DA?
DA.
Okay. I redid, you can see on the schedule, if you look at the schedule, next week when we finish that, we're gonna be halfway through and more after February 12th. I also redid the budget because of the decrease in the expected expenditures of the Central Berkshire Regional School District. It has a real material effect on our budget. The school district's proposed expenditures are approximately $150,000 less than I anticipated and projected in the original budget, and I wanted you to see what that looks like. So if you've got the budget up in the corner, it says 2518 REV. You should have the one that says REV. That means it's been revised. It's been revised with the school district proposed expenditures that show up on the tentative budget. And if you go to page two, and you look down to the bottom, you can see the tentative budget again that you just tentatively approved. But what is interesting is to look at that, if you look in the middle column, you'll see what I had projected based on historical data, and you can see the difference. I had projected an overall increase of about $260,000, and it's actually gonna be about $106,000 if the tentative budget holds. And that makes a big difference in our bottom line. If you go to page five, you look all the way down to the bottom, that increases the unofficial tentative excess levy capacity by the amount of the decrease, projected decrease in that budget. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I conclude the budget presentation.
Thank you. Well done. We basically did item seven to the school budget update.
Mm-hmm.
All right, number 11, Town Manager Updates.
Okay. First, there's a couple of related programs. We have a letter, a letter in your packet dated January 18th from the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, asking the town to appoint two people to the Transportation Advisory Committee. I sent this along to the Traffic Commission, and hope that someone on the Traffic Commission would volunteer. In the past, Captain Boyle has served on that, been a very important committee, selected in the panic before him, been somewhat of a gateway to the NPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which has to be filled by an elected official. Anybody can serve, from the town can serve on the Transportation Advisory Committee. Dan Filio has volunteered, so he will serve. So the next week, next time we meet, I'll bring his appointment before you. But if one of you would like to serve, we'd be happy to do that as well. If not, you know, you can think about it. If not, we'll find someone. Maybe the second person from the Traffic Commission would also volunteer.
Ken, you went, go to full-time members or a member and an alternate?
Member and an alternate, John. I'll point that out. It's a member and an alternate.
So you're looking for an alternate?
Yes. Okay. If there's no questions about that, we can move on to the next piece of information that's related to the Transportation Advisory Committee. That's the Transportation Improvement Program. That's the list of projects that the Transportation Advisory Committee provides advice on, and the projects are actually programmed by the so-called NPO, or Metropolitan Planning Organization, and that's composed of elected officials and state officials as well. We have one major project that emanated from the town. That's the reconstruction of Dalton Division Road. There are a couple of other intersection projects that originated with the state. They're already on there. So to keep Dalton Division Road on, I simply had to update this form, which I've done. I wanted you to see what the form is. I did not change the budget figures, but I did change the schedule for the project. We pushed everything back a year. Nothing else has been changed on this form from the prior year. I submitted it for the first time last year after having had the project approved at the District One level as a project that could be listed on the TIP. So no questions. I'll move on to the next part of the report, which is Green Communities' Projects. What you have in your packet is the final report that went into the Green Communities' Office. To finish this project up, we not only had to spend according to our Energy Reduction Plan of almost $10,000, because we came in under budget on the projects we have out there, but we had to submit an annual report beginning of December, a quarterly report at the end of December, and a final report, which you see here, and this is a part of it. It's loaded with pictures. And now we'll have to answer any questions that the Green Communities' Division might have. I want to tell you, I want to point out that there was a team, Becky Slick, our town planner, did a lot of the actual hands-on work, and we, that particular in support of our Green Dalton Committee, our town building superintendent, the building inspector, two private vendors and hill engineers and WASC builders that all came together, and we got this money spent according to our Energy Reduction Plan. We've insulated the cemetery office building. We've got a budget for replacing the furnace in the garage building, which was part of the original Energy Reduction Plan, and we did it in a photo finish right on the last day, January 31st. Now, the really important piece of this that's continuing, I forgot to mention the LED lighting part, because that was part of what we did, and we have a plan for putting LED lights in town. That's substantially complete. I forwarded to all of you, there's a follow-up, there's a real synopsis, I would say, of the LED lighting project in your packet, but I sent to you the full information that we got from Tanker Lighting. So you all have and should start looking at it, because what we'll do here in the near future is have Tanker Lighting call in to a Select Ward meeting, and we'll go through this. Now, as you know, lighting is very crucial to public safety. So this Thursday at 5 o'clock, we're gonna have all the public safety officials meet downstairs, and we'll have two members of our Green Community, Green Dalton Committee, Peter Richard Hall and David Lebuzke, who've been working on this, to talk about the community lighting. It's been designed thus far to imitate the light that we have on the streets, to replace that. But nonetheless, Tanker Lighting has shown us places where we could reduce or eliminate lights. So since this is such a sensitive subject, because, you know, public safety, plowing and all that, we're going to go through that in quite a bit of detail, and then let you have a discussion about it. If any of you would like, if you don't want to convene it as a Select Ward meeting, but certainly any Select Ward member wants to come and just listen, can do that. Because you will get a chance to participate, as I said. We'll have Tanker Lighting call in and discuss it. If you want to get a kind of an advanced look at.
What was that, Ken?
This Thursday at 5 o'clock, Dalton Training Room. We'll be talking, we'll be talking about it with the public safety folks. So the police, you know, police chief, the highway superintendent, have emergency management. I've even given it to Kelly P., the head of our COA, because obviously, lighting at night has important implications for seniors, mobility around town, and that kind of thing. So we can invite her to come. We will be filing an application for the next round. We will be filing an application for the next round of grant funds, provided that we've done everything in the way the Green Communities' division wants it, and they're going to authorize us to move forward, and we see LED lighting as being an important part of the next grant application, as well as the moving forward with the insulation of the town hall, for which we received a special grant to do the architectural engineering. But that'll be coming later in the month, but now, early in March, we'll bring us a set of projects, your final review and approval before we submit it. If that ends my presentation on the Green Communities' projects, are there any other projects that people would like me to discuss? Any questions?
Thank you, Ken.
Can we make any kind of a step towards resolution of the White House Monday night?
Oh, what do we do with that? The building inspector brought the folks from Haptiff for Humanity in there to take a look at it. That's the last.
They're okay. They survived that.
They survived it.
Survived to look, huh? Yeah, I talked to them there across the street. They were asking some questions. Yeah, they were going to go look at it that day. I went just last Wednesday. So they even looked at it.
Yes, they did.
Okay.
I don't know.
Good step in the right direction, I think.
Also, John Bartels spoke to me. He had taken a look at the tax map, you know, and that's a very big lot. Didn't realize it's kind of a pork chop lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, it goes all the way over to Riddle Path, so maybe more than one house could be put up on that.
Or do we want to cut off a piece of it or something?
Piece could be cut off.
Make a playing field. Does it go behind the, you see the pork chop and goat, does it go behind the Who's House?
I think it does, but I didn't take a look at it myself, John.
Okay. Anything else?
If that's the case, we may have put a parking lot there already.
Yeah. Remember, that was cut out, just the way to explain it. I think that was cut out from, it was on one lot, and you remember, that was a mischief issue to Sergeant when he was on the board. We did a subdivision plan of the parcel of the Who's House.
He did something, he was a subdivision. I can't remember what it was.
We cut out the, we cut out the house, the lot that the Who's House sat on, so I think that's why it's got a hell shape.
Did that map, you were looking at it up to date?
The one, the one that John Bartels looked at was up to date, but I didn't look at it myself.
Have to look into that.
Yeah.
Because I thought the White House went straight back. It was, you know, about the 100 by 200 feet requirements for an hour or two lot. It's interesting. You may very well have to do that. I don't think we want to let, if there's a piece that goes over behind the Who's House, we don't want to lose that. Because that would be between the Who's House and our right-of-way to the town garage.
Right. Absolutely. Okay. Number 12, acceptance of a state grant for COA.
Take a motion to accept the grant in the amount of $16,286 that the town council laid in.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Much appreciated. Remarks for select board.
In the vein about the White House and the Haptiff, humanity people there. I talked to them last Wednesday. They consulted me about some things on neighborhood. Anyway, I suggested to them, there's a house on East Houston County Street across from Albi Adams that's been abandoned for about three years.
Oh, yeah.
But I think it's, the taxes are up to date, I think. And I said, "You're driving by there, take a look at that. That'd be a real project." I mean, it's in real tough shape. It's a real eyesore. So they said they would. Also, they, I'm not here to, you know, pat myself on the back or anything, but they asked me, they use my property as a staging area and parking cars because the house they're going to be working on is a very limited lot. It's only like 45 feet wide and about 80 feet deep, maybe 90. So they're out there. Got a big sign up on there. Real progress. Looking forward to seeing a second story in those.
Anything else? Okay, items of future agendas.
Mr. Chairman, is there any thought given? I know we just talked at Mark's suggestion, and I agree with the complément about whether we might schedule the...
Yeah, let's look at that and definitely schedule it at night.
Because I think you're going to see quite the outpouring for all of this proposal. We only saw a very narrow-focused Green Committee view tonight. Again, Green Committee with their political agendas, but hey.
Most of those people, of course, were not on the Green Committee.
I know.
Most of them were not on the Green Committee.
I know they are, but it was spirited by them. I understand.
February 1st, February 12th, February 26th. February 26th, would that be a good one? We've got to just...
That's fine. That would give everybody enough time, I think.
Ken, would that work for you? Because it's going to be a long meeting. Is there anything we can move around there on the budgets?
Let me take a look. I'll find my schedule.
Highway, tree wardens, snow, Supermanian Cemetery, waterhouse.
Those are all the highway budgets. It's a pretty big one. Highway budgets could perhaps be moved back to the 5th. Jen, roughly, probably, thank you.
Today is the 5th.
March.
The 26th, the 5th of March.
Oh, okay.
So if you want to have the discussion...
Move forward, okay.
Let's, let's...
Then we can move the highway budgets back to the 5th of March.
Let's do that, okay?
Yeah, okay.
I could move it back to 12. Either one, there's many differences.
He said, "Mark, John prefer March."
He's going to be busy with snow.
Let's give him a break.
Yeah.
He's been busting out there. Okay, so 26th, we'll do the pretender ball field.
If I understand it, what was said, Mr. Chairman, that this evening is going to be reserved for people that are supportive of this proposal.
Both sides.
Oh, we're going to hear all them, we're going to hear them again?
That's why I wanted to move things back and forth.
Yeah.
Okay? Yeah, it's good. They could have come tonight, too.
And they were already, some of them were already here, so sure.
Okay. Anything else on items of future agendas?
I think we have enough of future.
Okay, this leads me to announcements. The Dalton Police Department is reminding the citizen Dalton of the winter parking ban from 1:00 AM to 6:00 AM, which went into effect on November 15th, 2017, and will be in effect until April 15th, 2018. I will hold office hours by appointment. Please make an appointment with Judy Wagner in the select board office. For further information, please call 684-6111, extension 11. Please note that Dalton's official meeting postings, agendas, and minutes can be viewed at mytowngovernment.org/01226. State Representative Paul Marks holds office hours at the town hall, 462 Main Street in the Callahan Room, on Tuesdays from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, with the exception of the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesdays, office hours are 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the town hall, and from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach his office at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. The building inspecting office hours are Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and on Tuesdays from 8:00 AM to 12:30 PM. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.